The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to our regular town council meeting. Today is Monday, December 20th, 2021. It's 7:00 PM. Those in attendance, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and vice chair Underwood, if you would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations or public hearing this evening, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, December 6, 2021, special regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and reports. Do we have any announcements and reports tonight?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to acknowledge the fire company's elected officers for 2022 and recognize the fire company's captains and lieutenants as officers of the fire department. Who are: William Gammon, captain; John Misca, first lieutenant; Joseph, I'm sorry, Thomas Mancini, junior lieutenant; Douglas Markarelli, lieutenant; Christopher Santorelli, lieutenant; Philip Brochier, secretary; Raymond Moru, treasurer; and Dennis Wayne, assistant treasurer.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any other announcements or reports tonight for anybody?
Madam Chair.
Oh, right ahead.
I attended the library board of trustees meeting last week. And just two quick highlights. They have received a grant to purchase some Chromebooks for loaning. And the Library Connection Consortium, to which our public library belongs, it has over 30 public libraries in the area and in the state, have two new members, Farmington and Middletown. And that's a consortium, you know, where they share the catalog, share resources, interlibrary loan. So those are two new significant libraries that are going to be part of the consortium.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? I'll just mention that I attended the commission on aging meeting. Rosemary was previously the liaison to that, and they'll certainly miss you, but they expect to see you at their holiday luncheon in January. It was originally scheduled for last week, but due to a lot of circumstances, they've rescheduled it to January. So I'll see you there, Rosemary. The Commission on Aging is an active group. They reported on a number of holiday activities that occurred at the senior center. I know that Scott's going to probably add on to this, so I'm just going to do a couple of highlights. The number of holiday activities took place. They are also planning Christmas dinner, both for those who wish to come and those who would like to have meals delivered to their homes. So that's underway. And they continue to be busy with a lot of activities. And of course, they're keeping an eye out on all kinds of things, health-related. So they're very much aware of all those kinds of issues. So they're a busy group, for sure. There aren't any other reports tonight. We'll move along to appointments and resignations. We've already done the fire company officer earlier. So I'll ask if there are any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
I would like to, oh, motion to reappoint Robert Maschalek, Jr., to the zoning board of appeals for the term 10-121 to 10-126.
Second, our motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Are there any other appointments tonight? Okay, we will carry on. All right, no Board of Ed. Town attorney is not here tonight. So we are at the report of the town manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I have a couple of items, the first of which is the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge reconstruction project update. The Tomlinson Avenue Bridge replacement project is scheduled to begin in June. The work will be done by Dayton Construction. The council approved the contract with them, I believe, at the last meeting. During construction, the road will be closed through traffic, beginning when school ends for the summer, and reopening when school begins in September, when the school reopens in September. Detour signs will be erected, directing motorists to bypass Tomlinson Avenue by utilizing Woodford Avenue. The detour will also be posted on the town website in early June. We don't want to post it too soon and have people feel that. So it'll be closed during the summer months when school is out, and they believe they can get the work done during that period of time. Next item I have is the roadways department. As many are aware, Don Moschini retired as the roadway superintendent, and his final day of work was last Friday. Town staff conducted a search for his replacement. And I will say that I had a meeting with an individual this afternoon, and we made an offer to him. We have to go through a little bit of process before I announce his name, although I'll let the council members know who that is later. But for the time being, Ed Murtha from Newington has been appointed as the interim roadway superintendent. Mr. Murtha served as the highway superintendent in Newington for many years before retiring. Mr. Murtha will serve as the interim capacity until the position is filled. Right now, we're talking about that position being filled in mid-January. Either the January 10th is a starting date or January 17th. It really depends on how much we're able to get done between now and Christmas, as far as, you know, our routine, as far as physicals and reference checks and that kind of thing. But we think we can fast-track it. And so I had here several candidates have come forward, and we have narrowed it down to one candidate. So we feel pretty good about that.
Good news.
With regards to the police chief, Chief Eric Peterson is here this evening to give an update on the police department activities since the December town council meeting, at least the first December town council meeting. The second one, so Eric, if you might stepping forward to a microphone that works. This will be that one.
Madam Chair, council members, good evening.
Good evening.
Everything's going smooth over at the PD. A little bit of concern with a few employees that are out with COVID. So I've been working with Stacy, trying to put as many guidelines in place that we can to try to limit employees' exposures while they're at work. I work with Stacy, put some guidelines out for employees to follow while they're at work, and then gave them some good suggestions while they're at home, anticipating the possibility of a surge in the coming weeks. So I'm going to continue to watch that, watch the schedule, and try to, you know, try to get ahead of anything. In case we do get a good amount of people out at once, maybe we have to make a couple of adjustments to the schedule. So I'll keep a good eye on that and make sure that we don't end up out with too many out. If we do, like I said, we'll put some schedules around. The extra patrols that we've been doing are coming to a close next week. So they're pretty productive. Like I said last time, is a lot of good things came out of it. We came across a lot of, a couple times crimes in progress, recovered a couple stolen cars, things of that nature. So being out there, being able to provide those extra patrols has been pretty effective. Every year, we have in-service training. It starts early fall, goes through, slows down during the holidays, and then picks back up middle of January. That'll start to come to a close like February, and then I'm looking to schedule some mandated training later in the spring. And I'd like to be able to work with Robert Lee or the next town manager to put some things in place where we discussed, working out a couple of different options where we can lower the overtime with this mandated training. You know, 85, 90% of it involves overtime because we have to schedule the officers out of their shift to attend the mandated training. So a couple ideas that I could work on to try to lower it there. We're adjusting to the new printers that Matt put in place, but everything's going pretty smooth at this point, but looking good. And then I've just been continuing to watch the day-to-day operations of the department. Everything's going well. I have a few policies that I'm behind on that I want to get put out. I just haven't been able to get to them over the last couple of weeks, but I'll get to them this coming week, early next week. And that's all part of the, under the police accountability bill, in 2025, we have to be accredited. So I am, I have all the requirements that we have to have in place to do that, and I'm on track to do it and continue to, you know, chip away at that. It's a big undertaking, but there was some talk that it was going to be pushed back. So every department in the state has to be tier one accredited through the academy, and then there's a tier two. So there was some talk that amongst the profession that we would have to be tier two, and they would drop the requirement to be CLIA accredited tier one. But I don't think that's going to come in place. But either way, I'll make sure that we're moving forward to whatever they mandate, whether it's staying with CLIA or going back to the second tier of the state. Make sure that we're in good shape, so we'll be able to, you know, follow that mandate. Other than that, everything else is going well.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, Robert.
Eric, could you let the council give an update on how the body cameras are working out in terms of operation and the officers and whatnot?
They're working well. We've had a few hiccups with just the function of different cameras. I keep a running log, but we haven't had any major problems. I'm trying to put together a meeting with one of the representatives from Motorola slash WatchGuard that, you know, try to have them troubleshoot. We haven't, the problems we have haven't been the same. We've had maybe a half dozen problems, but they haven't been each camera that's consistent having the same problem. But working with the company is good. Whenever we have a problem, we send it back, and they send another one in the mail. And we do have a spare one that when we have to downline that one and send it back, that we don't have an officer go without one. So nothing we can't work through, but as far as that, you know, we've had to refer back to a few of the cameras, you know, a few of the footage where it's been pretty, you know, advantageous to be able to look back and look at it, whether it was for a performance issue or anything like that. So no major hiccups, but everything's going pretty smooth.
Officers are embracing it.
Oh, yeah, they like it. You know, even from the onset, there was no pushback or no, you know, no concerns. The only concerns they have now is just, you know, if they need it and there's a problem with it, then it's like, okay, where's that reliability? So we're working with the company to try to, you know, work through a few of the minor issues, like I said, we had. But yeah, they, I mean, consensus is that it's good to have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Our next item I have is a COVID-19 update. Seems to be first thing on the news just about every night. Plainville's case positivity rate is 64.8. You may recall that.
Did you say 64.8?
Yes, per 100,000. That's, in Plainville, we had 91 cases, people who tested positive last week. The school system is managing large volumes of cases and contacts as well. COVID booster clinic is scheduled at the Plainville Senior Center on January 12th, from 1:30 to 4:30. Residents can contact the senior center directly for more information. Both the Moderna and Pfizer will be administered, as far as booster shots are concerned. So there will be a booster clinic, although you can get them fairly regularly elsewhere. But if people feel more comfortable at the senior center, that'll be on January 12th, and that's being sponsored by the, and coordinated through the Plainville-Suddington Health District. Susan Lonzac is the new director. There's going to be a pediatric clinic. That's for children five to 11, scheduled for January 15th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Calendar House in Suddington. Details will be provided to parents in the district from the superintendent's office. I understand that there may have been some notices that have already gone out, even though it's in Suddington, you know, it's part of the district. And so scheduled appointments are required. And if they get enough scheduled appointments, they'll have, you know, from Plainville, they'll think about scheduling one in Plainville as well. So they're trying to get a feel for how many people might be interested in it, and then, you know, schedule something in Plainville as well. I know that Stacy Budin has been working very diligently, almost 24/7, on a lot of contact tracing and what. And I don't know, Stacy, would you like to just say a few words about what you've been dealing with, without getting into HIPAA issues? I know you'll be careful.
Yes. So, you know, Robert pretty much described exactly what we're dealing with right now in the schools. We have noticed an uptick.
Stacy, can you turn on your mic, please? Thank you. Perfect.
So Robert discussed what we're going through right now with regards to the schools, but we definitely have noticed an increase all around, including on the town side. It's been, we were very fortunate on the town side. We've been very quiet since the beginning of COVID, you know, a few cases here and there. But it seems that every time my phone rings, it's another positive. So we're definitely seeing an uptick in cases. And a lot of people who are just contacting us, telling us that they're in a home with a positive individual and just needing guidance for, you know, what the next steps are and what they need to do. So the positives are that the severity of the cases and what people are feeling is not very severe. And, you know, it is like the cold, pretty much, you know, but we do have some cases where that's not the case. But overall, we're just hoping that things, I know it's going to probably increase over the next few weeks with Christmas holidays and such, but we're really hoping that when we come back, that things kind of slow down a little bit because it is very busy right now. So.
Okay, thanks, Stacy. That's a lot. That's a lot, isn't it? 64.8?
Yes. I don't think.
So statistically, do we have any, is it like in certain areas or just spread across? That we don't break it down into communities or age groups or?
I don't have it available to me this evening. I'm sure Susan has it. I just didn't have it available for, you just didn't pass it along to me as yet.
Okay, I know the schools are pretty active with.
Yeah, I think a good portion of it could be.
Most of it is probably with the schools.
With the schools.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Next item I have is the financial dashboard for the first five months of the fiscal year. Has been distributed to the town council members and was posted on the town website over the weekend. So we didn't get it on Friday, but I believe it got up by Sunday mid-afternoon. So overall, as far as expenditures are concerned, and again, this is through November 30th, the total town budget, which, you know, has been increased with some additional appropriations, we have spent a little bit under 50%, almost 46% of our budget. Over the two-year average is about 45. So that's just really a timing issue, nothing out of the normal as far as that's concerned. General government, we're spending, you know, pretty close to the two-year average at 52.43 versus 52.2. Board of Ed is at 41.9. Two-year average is 39.8. I think some of that, those other expenditures were a little slow in, you know, last year because of COVID. So, you know, that's nothing alarming as far as that is concerned. Police overtime, we spent in the first five months, 50.84%. That's pretty much in line with the two-year average. We're, you know, a little bit above the two-year average, but, you know, not by a lot. We're significantly under on roadways overtime. And now that we've finished leaf collection, that's where a lot of those numbers are there. We, you know, I think that we ran a very efficient leaf collection program this year, and as a result, you can see where our, you know, roadways overtime is under what, at least in previous years. Buildings and grounds overtime is pretty much in line with the two-year. They do some overtime as well during the, you know, during leaf collection system. As of November 30th, we did not have any roadways or buildings and grounds overtime as far as snow is concerned. Haller tonnages from municipal solid waste, we're about 96, excuse me, 91 tons above our two-year average. We're a little, you know, that's a little bit less than what our two-year average was, you know, a month ago. So we're getting, you know, we're getting more in line as far as that's concerned. We predict that if we continue with the same rate, that we're, you know, that 90-ton overage going forward, it's, you know, it's going to translate to about a $37,000 deficit. However, on the recycling side, we continue to see recycling at a tip fee significantly lower than what we had budgeted. And we anticipate the potential savings on recycling, if it continues at that rate, will be close to $90,000. So that's positive news as far as recycling is concerned. With regards to the revenues through November 30th, we've, as far as all revenues are concerned, as of the first five months, we've collected 51.44%. Our two-year average is 51.47. So that's, you know, pretty much in line. As far as current taxes are concerned, we're actually a little bit of, we're about 1% higher than, you know, than two-year average. So we continue to be strong on our current taxes collection, which is generally, you know, a function or indication of the economy in town. So I think that's good news. No changes as far as our unassigned fund balance. We still project that we're going to have about a $9.9 million fund balance as of the end of the fiscal year, which, you know, is, if that continued to be 15.58% of our budget. So that's healthy. That's going to put us in a good position as far as our budgeting for next year, especially as it relates, perhaps, to funding items in the capital improvement budget as well. As far as the recreation budget, and, you know, both on the expenditure and revenue side, recreation budget's $252,000. Expenditures are starting to, you know, you know, at 34%. We're still being impacted on our expenditures because of the programs that we offer during COVID. On our revenue side, same thing, although, you know, the expenditure's a little bit up and so are the revenues. But we're still going to be under budget, you know, on both sides, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. It kind of pays for itself to a certain degree. As far as Robertson Airport is concerned, you know, we've spent 2.38% of our budget. Most of the Robertson Airport budget is the payment in lieu of taxes, which generally happens in January. So we'll probably be up in the 90% area once we get into, you know, the budget, next year's budget, or once we get into '22. We have spent to date $138,000 on capital. And if you've been up to the airport lately, you'll see that a lot of work has been done to the outside of the building, creating a new entranceway into the administration building, creating a new observation area, picnic area, you know, on the backside. And we hope to have that open in the spring. So that's very positive as far as that's concerned. On the revenue side, we continue to collect, you know, according to our lease, our airport fund balance, now that we've gotten some revenues from our grants, stands at about $666,000, which is very positive. And we were notified late last week through the federal government that the American Rescue Plan is going to be providing additional revenue to general aviation facilities, which Robertson Airport is. We were notified that for this year, for this, what they call the federal fiscal year, which goes actually through October of next year, that we will be receiving $159,000 in revenues that we were not expecting. And in fact, we were told that we're going to get that each year for the next, you know, for the following four years. So that's, you know, that's going to be a significant amount of revenue. I'm not quite sure how we can spend it yet. I'm sure it'll be somewhat, you know, I don't think there'll be a lot of restrictions on it, other than it has to be spent as far as the airport is concerned. And we do have some needs up there that can be addressed, and which could include, you know, fixing up some of the facilities and doing some additional repaving in those areas that I know that the Aviation Commission and the fixed base operator were interested in having redone and, you know, and it was being pushed back because of the potential cost. This may provide us the opportunity to do that as well. As far as the water pollution control budget, we're a little bit ahead of the last two years, but we were down on the last two years because of COVID. We also have the new phosphorus up and running, so that, you know, so our costs were, you know, it's going to be ahead of a two-year just because of, there's some upfront costs as far as phosphorus is concerned. But we feel that we're going to come in on budget, you know, in the end. As far as revenues are concerned, we've collected, you know, 94.6%. Most of our revenues come in in November, by the end of November, and our two-year average is somewhere around 96%. So we're in that, you know, relatively close as far as that's concerned. The library budget, again, is expenditures. Total budget is $744,000. Total budget is, spent to date is 48.65%. Two-year average is a little bit over, right around 51%, a little bit, you know, so that's in line. Revenues are trending a little bit under the two-year average, about, you know, 5% under. I think that's mostly due to, you know, the market, you know, the funds that they get from the market. As far as our major projects report, not much activity in the last, you know, in the month of November. We did spend some money on the phosphorus removal project. We're still talking about, that's still under budget of about $882,000, and it's almost closed out. So we expect that to come in, that project to come in under budget. Wheeler School project, there was some dollars spent, $69,000 spent in November. You know, we're still, have a project balance of about $2.3 million. We expect that to come in under budget as well. It's almost complete. And no money spent on ARPA yet, although we've had several meetings. And Town Line Road Reconstruction, which is being fully funded by, you know, a grant, but, you know, we spent, you know, in November, paid the contractor a little bit over $1 million for that. We have a balance, project balance of $158,000. That project is pretty much almost complete. They have to do some fix-up in the spring, and we have to do some work on some of the driveways that the businesses have gone into. But that's pretty much the financial report for this evening. I think everything is looking very positive. And with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Dasko for some happenings, and then we'd both be available to answer questions you may have for us.
Great. Thanks, Robert.
Through you, Town Manager Lee, and Madam Chairwoman, the first reminder I have comes on property taxes. They're due January 1. This is your reminder. This will be the second installment, 30 days to pay. For any information, please feel free to contact Town Hall at 860-793-0221, and information will also be on the website. Also, in the month of January, motor vehicle supplemental tax bills will be going out. That, again, is the same January 1 date. Any questions, feel free to reach out, and we'll have that information on the town website. Other than that, I've got senior center happenings, as you alluded to. The first one is the Christmas dinner at the senior center, Saturday, December 25th, at 11:30 AM. Special meal for the senior center and any Plainville resident ages 60 and older. This will feature a delicious homemade traditional Christmas dinner. Volunteers will provide transportation for those who need. Please register in advance by Tuesday, December 21st, so that's coming up quickly. Let us know when you register. They're asking for advance notice if you do need a ride. And if you would like one to be delivered, that's also an option. If you're into singing, I think we talked about this last month a little bit, the Plainville Senior Center has a choral group. Always looking for new members, perform at area nursing homes, transportation is available. And the next rehearsal is Friday, January 7th, at 9:30 AM at the Plainville Senior Center. Fitness classes, if you're looking for a New Year's resolution, the senior center is offering a variety of in-person and virtual fitness classes, including Zumba Gold, Gentle Chair Pilates and Balance, Yoga Lattes, Cardio Chair Fitness, Power Burst, and many more. Feel free to contact the senior center for more information at 860-747-5728, or online on the town's website. Drop-in activities also continue, as we've discussed. And one other one that I just wanted to focus on of these drop-in activities was there are computers available. As during the height of the pandemic, we sought to expand the computer offerings, so there are a number of computers available for members to come in and safely access, you know, whatever resources they might need. With that, I'm more than willing to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Robert or Matt with their report tonight? Okay, great job. Thank you both very much. Okay, moving on to our public comments section. I'll open this up. You will have one opportunity to speak to the council. We have a microphone over in the aisleway in that area. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Please state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the council tonight? Joanne? Can you, yeah.
Oh, right here.
Thank you.
Joanne, Edmund, 166 West Main Street. Well, it's time to make a decision. And it's more than time. And we have a very fine fellow who has done the job. He's been here 25 years, serving, serving 25, what?
Close, 25.
Yeah, yeah. And. And he's dedicated, committed, and he's done the job, so he deserves the reward. And I think that it's, I don't know when you're going to make the decision, but it should be soon. So moving on to the trail. And first of all, I'm all, of course, I'm all in favor of him being the chief permanently. Now, as far as the trail is concerned, I wish you'd move that alignment C to someplace else. You really are going to upset so many people with having it in their backyards, their front yards. It has no business in the park. All I see for, is I foresee trouble with the trail and where it is now, where you've got it planned now. I would say that you really need to move it. And really, you're not going to be here, Robert, so those that are left behind to make the decision, if the decision hasn't been made, it should be placed someplace else. And as far as the federal scene is concerned, be ever vigilant with this rogue regime that we have in Washington. It's a disaster. I have never seen it so bad as it is with this, these awful people that are making decisions for us. Thank you. I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Same to you, Joanne. Stay well. Does anybody else wish to speak tonight? Mr. Frangos.
You're moving better. You're moving better.
What?
You're moving better.
Oh, yeah. I should. I've been through the war zone.
Okay. Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. I'd like to start by saying welcome back, Joanne. And I'll go down to the financial dashboard. The last time I asked this question, I was told I didn't have an up-to-date with our financial dashboard. I think this is the recent one, November. And I have basically the same, cast me a little and help me with this. I'm not challenging. I ask for help. Wheeler School project and the Plainville High School parking project, we still, 90% complete. How much more time do you need for the Wheeler School? Just what's holding it up for such a long period of time? And the Wheeler School is one thing, a building, but a parking lot. It seems this is on forever. I'm sure there's a good answer, but can somebody explain it?
I can't tell you the specific reason why those are still open. I, my, well, Wheeler School is, probably got some more items that need to be finished up, but the parking lot, I'm sorry, I can't give you any further information. Mr. Lee, do you have any information on that at all? It's been a while. It has been a while.
Yeah, the parking lot is complete. We could probably take that off.
Should come off.
Yeah. And as far as Wheeler School project is concerned, there were some punch list items that dragged on. There were some drainage issues with regards to the roof. The building committee the other evening approved a lot of final, you know, final change orders and adjustments, so we expect that project to be closed out within the next 30 to 60 days. And that's important because, you know, we want to draw down on, you know, on the revenue from the, you know, the state grants, and we can't do that till we close it out.
Until it's closed?
Yeah. So that has dragged on. That $69,000 payment was, you know, adjustments that were made, and so I think we're pretty much in line. Matt, do you have anything to add tonight? I know you attended the last Capital Projects Building Committee. Anything to add to what I just said?
No. Through you, the Capital Projects Building Committee approved the final applications for pay and change orders related to the project, as well as move to accept the project. So it's moving towards the conclusion point, so as the town manager identified, next 30 to 60 days, that will likely be finalized.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt.
That's the last. The next one is just a personal question. I don't know how many more meetings Mr. Lee will be attending, if I may ask.
He'll be here for a little while.
Okay. This isn't his last meeting?
No, it isn't.
Well, the reason I did this, I just want, I'll present this now because you never know what's going to happen with the future. I would like to, and I took the time to write this.
Yep.
I would like to start by thanking you, Mr. Lee, for the job you have done for the, as a town manager, for the town of Plainville. We had disagreements regarding decisions you made, but then I would think that they were decided on the good of the town as a whole, and you could not please everyone. However, my most significant thought regarding you as a town manager was not just the managing of the town as a whole, but the time, but taking care of the individual residents. To that point, I would like to share, if you remember, Mr. Lee, a phone call we had years ago regarding the town waste containers. A neighbor called me, asking me for help because her waste container was too, she's old, elderly, was too large for her to handle, and was hoping she could get a smaller, more manageable container. She said she had made calls, was not getting responses, and asked if I could help. I called the Town Hall, I asked, asking to speak to you, Mr. Lee, and proceeded to tell you her problem. Early, early the following morning, I received a call from my neighbor thanking me for having the problem solved. My response to her was, "Don't thank me. Thank our town manager." It's a simple story, but to me spoke volumes of how you took care of the town and its residents. God bless you and your family. Have a long and happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frangos. That was very lovely. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council tonight that has not done so? Anybody else? Go ahead.
Gail Black, 4 C N C Avenue. First, I want to thank you for buying the airport for the town, doing that. I just, I've lived in other towns that have had airports, and I love having them. If you're looking for money, I mean, looking for something to do with money for the airport, you might try to get people from the FAA up here. They used to give seminars once a month over at Robertson, and I actually went one year. My ex-boyfriend was a pilot. His whole family flew, and so we went every, every month, and it was a lot of interesting stuff. And I've run into a lot of people. I grew up in Kanan, and people fly out from there to Robertson. So you see people from all over, and it's like, I don't know, to me, it's one of the nicest parts of town, I think. So, and it's, it's good for the pilots to be learning. They go all over. They go up to Vermont to learn how to offer gliding lessons, that kind of thing, so anything they can learn. I did actually ask when one of the places, when they had the opening, I wanted to see. But I don't remember what the reasoning was. They didn't do it. I do have a request. I've lived at my place on 4 C N C for several years, and behind us, or the next row down, is 10 C N C, and it's got a whole bunch of condos. And I've had to lead ambulances and other people like that down there because our building has 16 units, and they're looking for number 36, which obviously is not in our apartment building. And they put up a sign that says, "Hidden Glen." It's really hidden. And we get all their packages. I think everybody's gone over with their packages. It's not, the packages aren't the big deal. It's what if somebody's having a heart attack? You know, because it was somebody from the town that was actually, you know, trying to go down to the end of my building to see where number 36 was or something. I can't even remember. I usually go in the dark, so I don't know how many units there are, but I figure there are people that don't want to, want others to know who they are or where they are, you know, like insurance agents, that kind of thing. Because I do know people that do that. But, and the sign isn't out. It's not very far. It needs to be pushed further. So I put a sign up in the front of our building, letting the people know it's the next driveway, but that doesn't really help either. That's just, you know, a no, so. But anyhow, no, I think most of us have liked having you here. I haven't heard anybody saying, you know, from one particular side, anything against you, so that's a good thing. And I'll end with saying that it's good to have Joanne back, and I won't mention a certain subject. And that's it.
Thanks, Gail. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Okay. I think, I think all of those that wish to talk to us have done that, so thank you very much for your comments. We're going to move along through our agenda. We have no old business. I do have a new business item, so may I have a motion for item number one, please?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Revolution Regarding Thomasson Avenue Bridge Reconstruction.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Item number two.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve tax refunds as listed under your dendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. That takes care of our new business items. Other discussions of interest? Mr. Lee, have you anything else for us tonight?
I do not this evening, no, I do not.
Okay.
Except to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Great.
And Happy New Year as well.
Thank you, and I will echo that sentiment from myself out to everybody and their families, and most importantly, please stay well. You know, we've had a report that's, it is what, we're no different than the rest of the state or most of the country or the rest of the world for that matter, but I do hope you and your families are able to stay well and enjoy the holidays. Okay. Under our executive session, may I have a motion, please? Anybody?
Madam Chair? Motion to move into executive session.
Second.
For the, could you please, could you please read the two items that we are going to be discussing?
Certainly.
For the record?
Madam Chair, legal negotiations and town manager search.
Okay. And I have a second. Any discussion? All us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.